I hereby call this regular meeting the Board of Supervisors, King George, Virginia, Tuesday, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Just to let everybody know, we do have a quorum here. Chairwoman Cupka will be attending virtually or by phone, so she will be there. Chair Cupka, are you there? Not yet. Okay. Before we get going on the meeting right now, what I would like to do is introduce our new county administrator, Mr. Chris Miller, seated right here. Mr. Miller just started yesterday, I guess. Welcome. Thank you. Mr. Miller brings many years of local and regional government experience to the county. We're really looking forward to working with him. Thank you. Mr. Miller, are there any amendments to the agenda? We'll start with public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. We do have a list of folks right here that have signed up. First on the list is Marion Walinski. And Mr. Dines, if you can get the shot clock up.
Am I ready?
Anybody speaking tonight, please state your name and address. Three minutes, we'll start after that.
Okay, I'm Marion Walinski. I live on, I live at one zero five three Mill Lane, Georgia. I live at Project Faith. I live with three women who, one of my roommates has cancer. We've had numerous problems with the phone, the internet, and the TV. That was promised to us when we were assigned the lease the first time and said that was included with our, with our lease, with our rent. And that was included with the electricity also. Numerous times it's been turned off for the first six months that we lived there. We had no cable, no phone, no internet, nothing whatsoever. I complained about it. I've complained and nothing was said or done about that. And I was told, well, what am I supposed to do about it from the project manager over at Project Faith? I also, I'm also concerned about, about myself and my two roommates. We had, this is supposed to be, be low income housing, low income housing. And our rent's going to be going up five percent until we reach to the point of eight hundred ninety-six, eight hundred ninety-six dollars. Now, I can't afford that and neither can my other two roommates. The three of us live together. We've been living together for four years. And I've been trying to find someone to help us to resolve these issues with Project Faith. And all I get is the runner, is get the run, is get the runaround. And I think that something needs to be done or I need to get some answers where I can go and find, find the answers where we can afford this housing because the three of us don't want to be out on the street anymore. We've been there once before and we plan on not doing that again. I would like to thank you all for your, the opportunity to speak on this, on my behalf of myself and my three roommates. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have, I believe it's Barbara Long.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Long. I live at one oh five three zero Tins Blue Mill Lane, Project Faith. Our rent is going to go up where we can't afford it. We don't get the maintenance that we need. We don't get the things that we need taken care of. Even when we asked multiple times, I have two people that are in wheelchairs. And I, myself, as a cane, we need to have somebody stand up for us because we can't. We got a voice, but we're trying to bring it to you all. We are, we can't, like she said, we can't live out on the street. We've been there before. We don't want to do it again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have Mary Wright.
Hello, my name is Mary Wright and I also live at one zero five three zero Tins Blue Mill Lane in King George here. I would like to say, when I first moved in, I was told that certain things were going to be available. The internet, the telephone, so on and so forth. I've got cancer and I told the people there that run the place to, please, at least make sure the telephone stays on. That's what I only need. I don't have the internet. I don't have a cellphone. I'm old school, so. And it's affecting all of us. The whole neighborhood is becoming in an uproar because of the five percent interest rate for the rent. When I was moved in there, I was told two different times that I would not be charged the increase on rent. And both times that I was told that I got charged for an increase in rent. It's just a very ill-run place. When I moved in there, the place had not even been painted since the first tenants were there. And we're set up for disability and a lot of the things that disabled people use, like bars in your restrooms or bars on the wall, is destroyed and nothing is being done. We've asked for a refrigerator to be fixed, a brand-new refrigerator, for three weeks now and still can't get an answer trustworthy enough to say, well, we'll be fixed. Other than that, I mean, it could be a very nice neighborhood, but people just don't care in the management department. They let the trash accrue throughout the whole area. Grass, when it's cut, is cut halfway, not all the way like it should be. And this is stuff that we're supposed to be paying for. I think five percent interest every year is going to put me under. I live off SSI and I only get a certain amount and I'm left with a hundred and twenty dollars for the month after paying for everything that we're not receiving. So it's, it's scary because I have lived out on the street and I really don't want to end up going back. So I was wondering, you know, maybe we could find different avenues for housing and things like that. I and my two roommates have been looking into things.
Okay, ma'am, that's, yes, that's your three minutes. Thank you for coming up. Next we have Terry Davis.
Good afternoon. My name is Terry Davis. I stay at one oh three four five Vinnich Way. The five percent rent they are going up, I can't afford. I'm on disability. It is just hard. And the maintenance around there, they don't do anything they're supposed to do around there. You go home, you call, you call, they'll say they'll get your things and never get it done. I mean, I need filters in my apartment. They haven't came and changed though. It's just hard. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have Lissy Hartburg.
Good evening. My name is Lissy Hartburg. I am a past president of King George County AARP Chapter thirty-one ninety-five. I also live over here in what is now Project Faith. We received notices that our rent will be raised every year five percent starting July first. Now, this notice didn't come out until June twenty-second. I think that's a very short notice for many people who are being reinstated. Many people have lived here all their life. Many have been born here. Many people are senior citizens here. And I think this is a very outrageous system. And I think it needs to be looked into and I believe it needs to be investigated. And that, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Next we have Mary Grant.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Grant. I thank God for where I'm living at, where I'm living at. I don't have no problem with where I'm living at. It's a beautiful place to live at, but literally, I'm five percent. I'm on fixed income, on disability, Social Security, and I literally can't afford five percent. It's a, like I said, it's a beautiful place to live at. I get along with everybody over there, the manager, everything. It's just that my personal life, my finances, I literally can't afford it. I really can't. I truly can't. And the only guard is keeping me for the last two years to be over there proprietary to my income. And by the time I pay rent and other things as well, I bet I got ten, fifteen dollars left over. So that's my, that's my thing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up we have Robert Ashton.
Yeah, once again, I say good evening to you board members. I'm here to see where we are at, at with the removal of the Confederate monument standing in the courthouse of justice. I have come before the board for several months now and I have explained to all of you why the monument should be removed. I just hope there is action coming soon. At your last meeting, one of the board members stated that in his opinion, all the monuments and items on the grounds of the courthouse should be removed. You know, I agree with you because of the separation of people that is displayed. One, the Confederate monument is a symbol of racism when clearly its wording is stated on inscription to the officers and soldiers of the Confederate Army from King George who served in the South, who gave their lives for the South, excuse me. We all know in that era what the South wanted to do. There's no wording in today's society that can say otherwise. It represented oppression of people of color. I've heard from those opposing views coming here and they just don't make common sense of why we should keep the statue in place. How can someone claim ancestry to people who did not have a voice? How, the other is, the other statue is called a tablet. Its inscription says, "This tablet is erected in memory of men who served in World War from King George County." Up the top, it is naming all white men who served. At the bottom, it names all the colored. Though my great uncle name is inscribed on that tablet, it is not something that I'm proud of because even back then, this nation was divided when we are the United States of America. Can you figure that one out? Don't get me wrong, I am proud of my uncle and his service to this country as a United States of America. But was this country true in values to him and all people of color who fought in the war? So, yeah, I agree with you. Those statues, they separate us and I believe that they should be removed, all of them. They're there. I know some people might say that they're there as a fixture to remind you of something. But what you want to be reminded of, we're here. Thanks for allowing me to speak once again. I agree with you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashton. Next we have Don Shelton.
Don Shelton, Ninety-four Thirty Ashburn Court. First of all, all those who did the hard work for Saturday night's event, it was fantastic. It was one of the best fireworks I've ever seen in my life. Thank you for all you've done. Regarding to both monuments, these monuments was built, paid for to honor the citizens of King George County who had died. And that's the sole purpose, is to honor the people of this county. And if you look at it, clearly half the population of King George is descended from all of them. I told Mr. Ashton one time, I said, when those boys and girl, those boys on that World War One monument, when they was over there and you're fighting side by side, it didn't make a damn if it was black or white. Just fighting for our country and to save their own lives. So that's just my little thoughts about the monument. It's where the sole purpose was not to honor slavery, not to honor Confederate states. The war was over. Slavery had been ended. We was back in the United States of Virginia was. And all those boys over there that died, they had no choice. When Virginia voted to secede in King George, they had no vote in that. But the laws of land, they had to go fight where they want to. You think my great-great-grandfather, whose mother was black and father was Cherokee Indian and they were slaves in West Virginia went and fought for slavery? No, he fought for the people and the land of this country. Again, thank you for all the work you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Next we have Anna Marie Lovell.
Hi, my name is Anna Maria Lovell. I live in Presidential Heights. First, I want to welcome the new county administrator, Mr. Miller. And I want to thank you to Mr. Watson-Brett for all the work he has done for the county of King George. But he knows that the county needs help. He did an excellent job. Also, I want to thank you, Mr. Malbryton, for the excellent job he's doing. I want to thank the board of supervisors for the job they are doing. I know you make a lot of sacrifice with your families to do this job. I also want to thank you, the sheriff, Mr. Chris Giles, and his deputies. They are doing an amazing job and I know that it's not easy to do this job at this time. Thank you, all of you.
Thank you, ma'am. And last I have is Bob Baird.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bob Baird. I reside at one five three one six Kings Highway. I'm currently vice president of the King George Historical Society and chairman of the County Tourism Advisory Committee. Tonight, I'd like to address several things. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Miller to the county. His expertise in regional planning and transportation will be a major asset to the board in this county as we move into the future. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate Parks and Rec and all the members of the King George community that were responsible for the successful Independence Day celebration this last weekend. It was fantastic. The weather cooperated, the music and fireworks are first rate. Unfortunately, due to a lack of advanced public relations, a lot of people weren't aware of the event and attendance was lower than it should have been. Building on that, I'd like Mr. Miller and the board to consider in the future establishing some type of centralized public relations function to get the word out on county activities and events. From a county administration, public service, and tourism perspective, we need to do a better job of getting our messages out to the media. In another issue, the traffic on Route Three, Kings Highway, is continuing to grow. Speeds are up, volumes up, the number of accidents and related injuries and fatalities continues to rise. Just last week and again today, we suffered fatalities from head-on collisions on relatively straight sections of that highway. I highly recommend that the sheriff's office, state police, and VDOT put together some type of short and long-term plan. We can't put it off. I see too many cases every day. Lastly, I want to remind the board and Mr. Miller that we have over three hundred years of history here in this county. Some aspects have been good, some aspects have been bad. In either case, we cannot let people forget that history. We must learn from it. We must teach it to our young people. We must learn from our successes and our failures. We must all work together to tell the whole story that brought us where we are and where it will pave our way into the future. We cannot get rid of our monuments. We cannot forget what we learned from Ralph Funch. We cannot forget what we learned through Shiloh School, through many of the developments here in this county over the last three hundred years. There have been valuable lessons learned for our county, for our state, and for our nation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. Mr. Dines, do we have anybody online? Okay. We will close public comment. Did anyone get any statements or anything emailed? Okay, we'll close public comment. Moving on to report to members of the board, Mr. Bush.
So this is strange, being able to go first. Usually I'm on the other end. Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. So quite a few things brought up tonight. I don't really have a report per se, but I'd like to address some things that were spoke of this evening. First off, to Mr. Ashton's comments, he's absolutely correct. I do believe that we need to remove all the monuments and here's why. We have a courthouse out here and we're currently building a new courthouse. We don't know what the future of the current courthouse is. Is it going to be future county administrative spaces? Is it going to be a museum or is it going to be leveled? We don't know. I believe that now that we have the opportunity and someone who is willing to take the monuments at a cost, of course, to the county, but that the monuments would be protected, still accessible to the public and on public display for those who want to visit the monuments. I believe with that, to protect the integrity of the monuments, they do need to be removed as long as we don't know what the future of that courthouse is. I think that's the rational, logical thing to do. As far as divisiveness in this county, going back to the Revolutionary War, the Civil War, today, there still is divisiveness in this county, in this country. And it's because we all continue to put ourselves in little boxes with labels. I think it's time we start moving away from that and we just start addressing each other as our fellow citizens, Americans, King Georgians, so have it. So that's where I am on the monuments and why I take that position that I believe they should be removed and relocated. And it's for the integrity to preserve it because we do need to remember our history because those who forget their history are doomed to repeat it. With that, I'd like to address the multiple comments regarding Project Faith. So as far as the five percent income or increase in the rates, this board doesn't have any authority over that. We, it is run by a board of directors, so we do not have a say in that. However, I do have concerns about this five percent increase and the conditions of Project Faith because numerous times, Project Faith over the years, even prior to my position on this board, has come before this body and asked for support from King George County for multiple federal and state grants. Now, those federal and state grants are tax dollars. We levied our support most of the time. I believe the most recent time, we denied them support. But they're run by a board of directors. Project Faith Board of Directors is accountable to their residents. If their board of directors are utilizing public dollars, whether they come from the county or not, if it's federal or state grant dollars, I believe that's something that needs to be looked at. I would like to get an opinion from the Director of Department of Social Services. I believe they're very involved with Project Faith, especially for those that are receiving subsidies to be able to live there and see basically what the hell is going on over there. This is, tonight isn't the first time I've, I've heard about Project Faith and it's been going on for quite a few years. This just happens to be one night where we've had multiple residents come out. So being that they are separate from King George County, I want those lines to be clear. But I am curious because they are receiving federal and state dollars. And I believe that that's something that we do need to look into. That's all I have for my report, sir. Thank you very much.
Mr. Grandtrou.
Yes, sir, thank you. Like I say, first of all, thank you to everyone for coming out and giving your public comment. For the individuals who came about Project Faith, thank you for sharing that. I was unaware of the five percent increase, so thank you for bringing that to my awareness. I'm not sure exactly what the board could do to assist at the moment. This is the first I heard of it, so it would take some investigation. I think Mr. Bush had some, some good points to possibly look into. But I'm sure that's not the answer you're looking for. You're probably looking for something right now. I don't have an answer for you right now, I'm sorry. But thank you for coming out and sharing the information because unless you inform us, then we can't provide any help. So we'll see what we can do. Thank you, Mr. Ashton, for coming out as well. Again, I know you didn't get to finish. If you would like to put your comments and send them an email, you're welcome to do that. If you would like to meet and discuss, I would certainly be willing to do that as well, sir. And so, either way, but I know you didn't get to finish your comments, but I appreciate you coming and providing comment. And then when time was up, I appreciate that you recognized that as well. So thank you for that. But I also appreciate that you will want to have your voice heard and so you didn't get everything you want to say. So if you need to do that, I understand it and I'll make myself available as well. Everyone else, thank you as well. I appreciate everyone's appreciation for the county staff. It's always nice to hear that as well. I think they work hard. I know they work hard and they do a great job. And so it's always nice to hear from citizens as well, Sheriff's Department, Community Development, County Administration. That, you know, everyone does it. I don't want to leave anyone out and I probably shouldn't just call out certain departments. They all are great. So, but thank you for identifying it. It is always nice to hear. Other than that, I would just like to say as well, I would like to echo about the fireworks on July tenth. I'd like to thank all the staff that worked on organizing it. I know Mr. Chris Clark was heavily involved in coordinating and setting that up. Thank you to everyone that was involved in making it a success. It was a great event as well, again, and so thank you to everyone for making that happen and making it available to the citizens of King George. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mrs. Binder.
I have quite a few, but I'll try to go quickly down the list. At first, I would like to appoint, not appoint, excuse me, recommend Mr. Chris Nurney to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I also, I'll just go through, I've been pretty busy in the last month. I've attended the Dogland Heritage Museum, Healthy Generation meetings, the GW, which is the George Washington the GW, which is the George Washington Regional Commission Executive Committee Search Meeting, met with Mosey Architects in the Courthouse Construction Meeting where we're finalizing and getting to the point where we add furniture into the structure. I want to welcome Mr. Miller. Thank you for coming in and joining our family of King George. And I also want to echo a thank you to Travis Quisenberry for stepping in when we really needed him. To the Fire and Rescue and Sheriff's Office and Chris Clark and Parks and Rec, thank you very much for your help during the fireworks. It was just as great as in November and it was really nice to see a lot of King George residents very happy. We've gone through a lot in the last year and those little things that we can help the residents feel, you know, give them a level of spirit. I heard a lot of people were very excited and oozed and ahs at the fireworks display and it was nice to see everybody out there. Mr. Baird, I wanted to mention, I've said for many times, we should have somebody doing our social media web presence and public relations. I agree 100% with you. I want to thank everyone from Project Faith who came out. I did look into it with Mr. Franklin from Social Services and Mr. Quisenberry. I provided a packet to them of sources they can talk to. I can do a little bit of further investigation. It's very complicated because of state involvement and, you know, the county doesn't really have say in it, but it could be looked into a little further. I did put it on Mr. Franklin from Social Services radar. And they did receive a packet of information of other state people that they can contact to voice what's happening at Project Faith. It's a little murky. Who's in direct control of Project Faith right now? Is it the state or another Board of Directors? So we're going to look into that. Mr. Ashton, as you always come and thing, I will have to talk with the new county administrator where the status of the RFP is for we were looking into how much it would cost to move the monuments. So that is something I will look into next week for Mr. Miller. It's only his second day on his job, so I'm not going to throw him into the fire on that one. All right, last, but not least, I want to make sure I got everything here. So on last Thursday, July 8th, Chairman Cupka and I went down to Warsaw to participate in what was considered the groundbreaking, but since it's laying broadband fiber optic cable, it's not really a groundbreaking, but it was the launch. And the governor was there and our local delegates and representatives. And what it signifies is our partnership that King George put in $650,000 to this to bring high-speed internet to some of our residents that are underserved. There's quite a few in the Shiloh District and a bunch in Mr. Granger's district and James Madison up near Oakland Park and that area on 218. I personally wish we can bring more. And when Ms. Cupka and I spoke to the governor, I cornered Governor Northam and said, "How can we be able to utilize those power lines to bring the power, to bring from all points broadband down to the houses?" And right now, it's, there's sort of a monopoly there from a local cable provider. But that's something I want to look into because we have a lot of those high-power lines in our county, especially going down 301. And we have a lot of citizens that the cost of entry by getting cable service is quite high, sometimes $30,000, $40,000, $50,000. And if they're able to use the transmission lines already there to be able to tap in and get all points broadband, I think that would be really important. And it's something that I'm still continuing to look at because we found out through the pandemic that broadband access is very important. Well, one thing we did do there and it's kind of cool. This shovel signifies our partnership, the broadband partnership on July 8th, 2021, between King George County, Lancaster, Northumberland, Richmond and Westmoreland. And why this is really important is this is a pilot project in the United States and we're setting a standard in the country of partnerships between utilities, private and public, state, federal and local dollars, all coming together to bring broadband, sort of almost like how we electrified the nation. And so this signifies that. And I know Chairman Cupka would like to put it in a shadow box in the back of the pictures, but I'm going to present this to Mr. Miller over here. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bender. Madam Chair, can you hear us? Do you have anything to say?
Hello, Mr. Chairman, for the evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. So I want to start off by thanking you personally for running the meeting tonight in my absence. I very much appreciate it. I want to apologize to the public that I could not be there in person this evening. I am traveling out of state. I will keep my comments very brief. I do want to welcome Mr. Miller. I did call him yesterday on his first day and welcome him as our new county administrator. I want to thank everyone there in the Rivercombe Boardroom who came out this evening for comments. And please know I will get back in touch with you when I am back in town later this week. And I just want to note for the record, I did call each of my colleagues today and send via email regarding a letter to Representative Robert Whitman regarding requesting that the parties, Mary Washington Healthcare and Cigna Insurance, try to get back to the negotiating table regarding renewed contract negotiations. And I will just leave it at that for tonight and thank you again.
Thank you. I just also wanted to say that Chair Cupka is participating through electronic and remote means pursuant to the rules previously adopted by this board and through the governor's budget. Chair Cupka is participating by remote means and I direct the clerk to include this statement and any statements of remotely participating board members to be memorialized in the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I do have an update on the monument removal. If I can take it right now or I can wait until my report?
Wait for your report. You can fill us in on it. That'd be great. Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for everybody coming out. And the folks at Project Faith, thank you for coming out. This is the kind of stuff that we don't know about unless you all come out and speak to us about it. But we will have, like Mrs. Bender said, there's, you know, you all have some information that you have some folks that you can speak to and they'll definitely be following up. And, you know, like the other board member said, it's something that we don't really have any control over at all. But without you all coming out here, we don't know what's going on. So I appreciate that. Mr. Ashton, thank you. I guess Mr. Miller will give us an update here in a few minutes about what's going on, but thanks for coming out. Mr. Baird, thank you and thanks for all the work that you do on your boards and your commissions. And I agree with you that the traffic is getting terrible. It seems every day we're having another fatality or a major accident. But the Sheriff's Office is out there doing all they can do. And unfortunately, with navigation systems and phones and, you know, it's just great technology, but it's very dangerous technology when it's on the road. Mr. Shelton, thank you for coming out.
I'll be brief. The June 23rd, I attended the Rappahannock River Basin Commission also held in Warsaw. And they had, we had a walking tour of downtown Warsaw and showed the partnership between the feds, the state, the county and the town of what can be done in cooperation with each other down there. And the entire town of Warsaw has been completely redone and been revitalized. It's a really, really cute little town right now. They did some great work on their stormwater management and even in the rain that we had, 10, 12 inches of rain a couple of weeks ago, they had no flooding issues at all. And they used to flood out down there when, anytime they even had a brief shower, their downtown area was flooded out. So they've done a fantastic job doing all that. I recommend going down there. They get some great restaurants and some little places. So if you haven't been down there in a while, it's changed quite a bit. The 26th, I did a litter pickup down in Dogron. We had a whole four of us down there picking up. We did fight the ticks and the mosquitoes and everything. And we ended up picking up 21 bags of trash, five tires, two computer printers. There was a full toilet, but we couldn't get it up out of the woods to get it into a truck and a lot of other assorted treasures. But I wanted to thank the volunteers that were there and friends of Rappahannock for all their work. All the, we concentrated on all the storm drains and the runoffs that dump into Williams Creek, which dumps into the Potomac, which dumps into the bay. So I wanted to say thank you. We will be doing more of that, but we're going to do later in the fall, when it cools off, we're going to get back into that. So you can stay tuned for that. July 10th, yeah, great fireworks, just fantastic again. They did a fantastic job. Thanks to Parks and Rec, thanks to Fire Department, thanks for the Sheriff's Office. Everybody that put time into it, they did a great job and I can't wait for next year. And Mr. Baird, again, that's more communication, advertising. The more we can get out, the better. So for sure. And I also have a a resolution here thanking someone that has been here in King George County for a very long time. Mrs. Barbara Howard Johnson, recently retired here with over 33 years of service. So we have a resolution and recognition of distinguished service for Mrs. Barbara Howard Johnson. And I will read it to you. Whereas the King George County Board of Supervisors wishes to recognize exemplary public service and leadership of Mrs. Barbara Howard Johnson upon her retirement. And whereas Mrs. Howard Johnson began her career with the county over 33 years ago just as an administrative assistant, but quickly found her county home in the Finance Department just a few months later. And whereas Mrs. Howard Johnson was one of the only two finance staff members, processed accounts, payable payroll, utilities, billing, landfill invoices, and also as the general ledger. And whereas Mrs. Howard Johnson worked in the Department of Finance during pivotal transition to include moving from the courthouse to the Rivercombe Building and purchase of the Bright Financial System. And whereas Mrs. Howard Johnson served the county as interim finance director after the resignation of the finance director in 2002. And whereas Mrs. Barbara Howard Johnson will end her 33 and one-half years of local government service after mastering the world of finance and receiving numerous accommodations as account manager. Therefore, now therefore be resolved that the King George County Board of Supervisors on this 13th day of July 2021 hereby thank Mrs. Howard Johnson for her many contributions to helping make King George County a better place to live, work, and does hereby congratulate Mrs. Howard Johnson as she celebrates her retirement adopted by the King George County Board of Supervisors this 13th day, July 2021.
Mr. Chair? I move to adopt that resolution as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Resolution passes. And that's all I have. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, before we go to that, could I ask one question? Ms. Cupka had asked for consensus from the board to send the letter encouraging both Mary Washington and Cigna to go back to the negotiation table. I don't, did the board, I'm in favor of that letter. I just want to make sure that everyone-
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor of it, but I don't think that that requires consent of the board. I think an individual elected official should be able to correspond with someone she's not representing the board. She's representing her position as an independently elected supervisor. So I don't think consent's required, but I do support it.
She was asking for it. So that's the reason I asked.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me. Yes. Okay, thank you. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented with one modification to modify the minutes from the June 15th meeting to show that the Fall Festival PAC funding request that the vote shows currently that Mr. Bush voted nay and that Mr. Granger voted aye. Those should be reversed. It should be Mr. Bush voted aye and Mr. Granger voted nay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Next, we go on to Constitutional Officers Report. Mrs. Hart?
Good evening, board members, Mr. Miller, Mr. Britton. First off, I would like to welcome Mr. Miller to King George. I think you'll enjoy it here. You'll like it here. I've been here a long time, just about all my life. And I think you'll enjoy it here. Thank you for coming aboard. The fireworks were fabulous, I've got to say. Sheriff Giles, the uniforms are fabulous, I've got to say. I do like those. And I wanted to come, asked me to come to speak a little bit about the cigarette tax that went in effect July 1. When I took office in 2016, I had a list. I wish I'd have brought it. I had a list about two pages of things I'd like to do, would like to see done, a few changes I thought should have been made. Of course, rearranging the furniture, that was the first one and I did do that quickly. But one of them on the list was cigarette tax. And as the years went on, I found out how hard it was to even get it or try to get it and talk to the folks in Richmond about it. And then it happened. So I'm real thankful and I don't want to encourage anyone to smoke. But I want to encourage you to go buy a pack. I bought a pack. And on there is our little blue stamp KG cigarette. I can't see it. I've got to put my glasses on KG Virginia. So the little blue one is the King George stamp and the pink one or the red one is the Virginia stamp. So, oh, he's got one. They took effect July 1, but the stores have 60 days to sell their stock. So you may buy some that doesn't have the stamp on it because I guess they'll try to get rid of those first. We have approximately 23 stores in the county that sell cigarettes. And there are 10 distributors that the stores purchase their cigarettes from. And these distributors buy the cigarettes from my office. There are 30,000 stamps in a box. And they, it costs 30,000, excuse me, they cost $12,000 for this roll of stamps. And as of today, we have sold 22 boxes at the cost of $264,000. And I have another distributor coming on Thursday to come in and get their roll that they need. My cabinet was, had arrived. I ordered a cabinet to keep them in. They have to be kept under lock and key. kept under lock and key, so I have that, and things are going well. I'm, I'm real pleased with it, a little rough at first learning it, and Deanna Price, my, one of my girls in the office, ladies in the office is doing it, and she's doing a fabulous job, and she's learning a lot along with me. So, um, there we go, we have cigarette tax in King George, forty cents on a pack. Y'all have anything, any questions or concerns? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hart.
You're welcome.
Next up, a report of the county attorney, Mr. Britton.
It's conspiracy. No one wants to hear lawyers talk, right, Mr. Granger?
Just told me that last week, I actually took it as a compliment. Thank you, I just have one matter, Mr. Chair. I introduced you all earlier, and I'll ask him to stand up, Mr. Ken Golsky. He's come to us as deputy county attorney, and I'm very glad of it. He joins us with over two decades of legal experience, as well as over a decade in local government, both in Hampton Roads and Norfolk and in Loudon. And you know something about handling local government issues if you came from Loudon. So he's well experienced, he's fitting in, he's a, an affable, nice fellow, and very experienced, and been getting around, and he's particularly skilled in the finance and area, and so he's handling a lot of those matters, and we'll be getting in on the ground floor of some other things, such as the redistricting, as we go through that, and going around and meeting with department heads. As you know, for some time, I think for at least two years, there has been a paralegal position available to the county attorney at a sixty thousand dollars a year that was not filled prior to my time, and then I didn't know about it, in the year and a half I'd been here, and, again, and so I didn't fill it. When I found out about it, I think some of the board members, as well as Donna, informed me that it was already, had a finance already in place, we advertised it, thank you to Tamika and Amanda for helping me out with that, but, man, we advertised all over the place, we got about twenty-five applications, one was qualified, even met our minimum qualifications, I'm not sure what it was about. In any event, as Mr. Golsky, as you know, put, put in his application for county attorney, which is still pending, and I said, hey, I got this position, would you be willing to, if I switch this to an attorney position, would you be willing to fill it? And he said he would. However, it is a sixty thousand dollar position, that is extremely low, and what I would ask to do is, and Travis gave me the exact language here, is to, I can go to my work, of course, I had it here, and basically I'm asking for the board to appropriate and move from the general fund to the county attorney budget, fifteen thousand dollars, to make that a seventy-five thousand dollar annual salary from sixty thousand dollars. The range was fifty to sixty for a paralegal, which was okay, but sort of the minimum range for an experienced assistant or deputy county attorney is seventy-five thousand dollars, so I would ask that that be considered by the board.
I move to authorize the transfer and appropriation of fifteen thousand from the general fund to fund the position of deputy county attorney in the total amount of seventy-five thousand a year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
And one other thing, I should have said this, it was, I believe, was in the motion, and the start date was actually yesterday, so would that be beginning as of yesterday? I should have put that, I apologize, Mr. Granger.
So you need another motion to backdate it to July twelfth?
For, you actually know, because that's in the July first budget, I apologize, so it's been appropriated. No, I don't need that, that's why Travis didn't put it in, I knew he was way ahead of me. Thank you, and I have nothing further, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Britton. Comes to, now we're up to our one public hearing tonight. King George County Board of Supervisors will now hear, will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive public input regarding a proposed amendment to the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. I will first ask this, ask for a staff report, I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak, please state your name and address before your comment, and on the completion of the public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. Mrs. Hahn?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Back on March eleventh, twenty twenty-one, the American Rescue Plan was signed into law by President Biden of the United States. Based on the allocation method by the United States Treasury Department, King George County will receive a total of five million, two hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars, of which fifty percent, or two million, six hundred and six thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, is currently available to the county. This public hearing is to, being put on to, so that we may amend our twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two budget to accept and authorize expenditures consistent with the provisions of the amendment.
So moved.
Second.
That's a good call.
That's- Good catch, yeah.
I rescind my motion.
Is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Dines, is there anyone online for public comment? And has anyone received any written statements? Okay, promotion, again?
I move to accept additional funds and authorize their expenditure consistent with the provisions of the amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so is, isn't this for action item zero seven, zero six, where we adopt the resolution to amend the operating budget to appropriate the funds? I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter if we do it now or do it then, but it, it's for action zero seven, zero six.
This is to accept the funds, not necessarily to appropriate the funds, so we would, I would assume have to accept them before we could appropriate them.
Mr. Chair, did you want me to address that?
Please.
Yes, so we have this budget amendment, we need to accept the funds in, however, didn't we expend, we didn't expended none of these, this is not, okay, so there is an expense that's gonna be made, I think it's five hundred thousand dollars, is that correct? And then the remainder of it, you were going to have a hearing, I believe, was announced at the last board meeting to determine how it was to be spent. But in any event, there's two motions, one is to adopt, one is to accept, and one is to appropriate.
That's, thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Chair, maybe you could have Ms. Hahn come back up and clarify.
Yes, Ms. Hahn?
Under, under action item oh seven, oh six, there's gonna be a resolution concerning the acceptance and appropriation, and I'll go over that at the action item on the agenda, if that's okay with the board.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion properly seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next we have presentation and reports. King George County Transit Feasibility Study presented by Mr. Matthew Lehan from GWRC.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. So I wanted to provide a update on the feasibility study that the George Washington Regional Commission has undertaken this year as a part of our rural work plan. So it's a part of the FY twenty-one RWP from last year, feasibility reinstating Fred Transit Service to assist with initial planning, G I S support and data analysis of potential bus routes in the county in coordination with Fred, and then deliverables were to support communication with Fred and creation of a baseline study to determine the feasibility of reinstating service in King George County. So as some of you know, there was a previous twenty eighteen study that was completed with a consultant and some transit modeling that was done to analyze the major transit generators in the county and ability for service to the residents and Dahlgren commuters. So analyzed several things, this study more so is brought an update to that and talked about the feasibility of service since then. So a lot of items from that study were used, as well as data points, and we were really looking to update that. So looked at transit needs, so transit dependent individuals, seniors, persons with disabilities, low income households, zero vehicle households, commuter analysis, employment clusters and travel patterns to Dahlgren, travel patterns, when and where, to and from, and then where and how much future growth may occur. Some of the transit needs, as mentioned, defined as a subgroups, and people who are most likely to use transit as the primary modes of transportation. So we found that with a lot of transit dependent individuals in and around the Dahlgren area, as well as around the county courthouse and along the Route three and three-one corridors. So those would be two areas where there may be a need for transit service, as well as commuter analysis, so of course commuters in and around Dahlgren are a big part of it, looking at basically sixty percent of those commuters travel between seven AM, seven AM, eight AM to work, as well as leaving between five and six PM. So those will be two good times to run a service if you were just looking for commuter service, say between the city of Fredericksburg and Dahlgren. And, and, and one of the third things we looked at was the travel patterns, so travel within the county. So looking at the peak periods of travel are in the four-thirty to five-thirty peak hour, as well as in the morning between seven-thirty and eight AM. And then the weekdays, sorry, weekends, the peak era is in the mornings, between, sorry, in, around lunchtime between twelve and one PM. Oh, it looks like we do have a presentation. Can pause for a second? Um, you can just skip ahead to slide, see next slide, and the next one. So just quickly the map of the transit, transportation, transit dependent populations, where they're located, darker red, lighter green, darker red is signifying more transit dependent populations. This was done in some modeling efforts, so that's updates of twenty eighteen, is still pretty up to date as of twenty twenty-one, next slide. And this is just the, the commuter analysis, looking at where commuters are, the darker colors representing, the map on the left, more commuters, lighter green, dark green, less commuters, as well as looking at where the Dahlgren commuters are located in the GWRC region. So a lot of them are located in King George County, but there is others in Spotsylvania, Stafford, Fredericksburg, and Caroline County. Next slide, please. This is just the graph of the travel patterns, so you can see the peaks in the morning, afternoon, the blue weekday, and then in the weekends, you can see the peak and kind of a plateau during the late morning and into the afternoon. Next slide, please. And the next thing we looked at was future growth, so one of the things you want to do is align the future growth, of course, with settlement areas outlined in y'all's comprehensive plan. So really denser transit oriented development should be encouraged within these settlement areas, and basically that transit oriented development will increase the viability of service, increase its feasibility, there'll be more people who are in denser areas who will be more likely to ride transit, as well as it will decrease the amount of sprawl, you'll be concentrating development more into these settlement areas which have already been outlined. So these settlement areas are areas that would be key for transit service, and you would run transit service basically from the city of Fredericksburg through some of these settlement areas along Route three, down three-one, up to Dahlgren, and, and of course in the future growth, provide denser development in those settlement areas. Next slide, please. So the first scenario, this is the recommended scenario, running from Mary Washington Hospital to Dahlgren, and providing service along Walmart, Route three, and Route three-one corridors. It would provide a high density of stops along the corridor with a total of seventeen, and there'd be kind of two options with this, shorter headways, longer headways, sixty minutes versus a hundred and twenty minutes, since this is about a forty-five to fifty-minute trip between Fredericksburg and Dahlgren. It would come out at a total cost, a yearly cost for just the operational of six hundred and fifty-five thousand for the sixty-minute service, that would be running two buses. Of course, there is the federal, state, and local match, so you guys would have around thirty to forty percent, around thirty-five percent of that to, to decide on, there are plenty of grant opportunities that potentially pay for that as well, if it is decided that this is feasible and something that could be moved forward with. So the next slide, just last, so really to receive comments on y'all's thoughts, I know it was previously discussed, I think, back in December, about moving forward with the study, as well as when it was decided on to start the study back last year. So receive comments and answer any questions on the presentation and the study draft. Update for questions and comments, and potentially move forward with the recommendations at a board meeting in August. I'm happy to take any questions and really answer any comments or concerns about the study that anyone may, may have, and provide any other materials that may be needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to thank you, Matthew, for coming and bringing that.
Thank you.
I just have one, you're, the commuter data, was that just done by car count, or how, how did y'all do that?
That was done with modeling efforts, a consultant called Foreware back in twenty eighteen modeled commuter flows between the Dahlgren area and really the greater Fredericksburg region and GWRC. So that's how they found the, basically where people are going to and from through the modeling efforts. This slide is, is sort of similar to that, looking at where people are going at times, and this was done with a company called Streetlight Data, which does kind of big data analysis of travel patterns.
That's two thousand nine, that one's two thousand nineteen data?
Nineteen data, yeah, they have up to twenty twenty, however, twenty twenty data, as you may know, is a little bit skewed in the form of transportation, so we use twenty nineteen for now, use twenty twenty-one when that's full.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, sir. So we do a lot of studies around here, and studies cost money, so my, my question to these studies, are we looking at this as an alternative to people utilizing privately owned transportation to get to Dahlgren, or are we looking at providing transit opportunities for those who do not have transportation? What, what are we looking at? Because from what I saw on here, if you're going from Fredericksburg to Dahlgren, chances are you got a car, okay? So I don't see why we would be paying taxpayer dollars, and I get it, it's grants, but grants are funded through taxpayer dollars. I don't know why we would be paying to give people an incentive, maybe? I mean, I would find it inconvenient to ride a bus instead of taking my own car, but if we were gonna utilize public dollars, I would like to see that utilized in more of a, a way to help those who, let's say, don't have transportation options, instead of saying, hey, if you don't want to drive your car to Dahlgren, you could take the bus. I've seen Fred Bus, I used to live in Oakland Park before me and Ann moved to the other side of the county, and there was a Fred Bus stop there, and no one ever got on that bus. It was a waste of money, it was a flop, and I don't want to see us investing taxpayer dollars again that really isn't providing a service, and we're just spending money. That, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Just to really answer that question, the study really looked at both opportunities to, to Dahlgren commuters, as well as to transit dependent individuals who you mentioned, who potentially don't have a car or need better accessibility through transit. So really we looked at both of those, and looking at the previous King George route, which ended in twenty twelve, there was a good amount of use, I believe it had around twelve to fourteen thousand passengers per year, and it provided service to those who, of course, a lot of them didn't have a car, and provided transport to and from the city of Fredericksburg, as well as to Walmarts, those are two of the major generators, so that is what the recommended scenario does do. It provides a service between central King George County, Dahlgren, a lot of the residential areas, to Fredericksburg, Walmart, and so on. There was another option we looked at, which provided service sort of an intercounty connector, just kind of a ring around the county. just kind of a ring around the county, Dahlgren, as well as the Route 3 corridor. And that was also looked at, but had less ridership and less feasible as it didn't go to, say, Stafford County or the city of Fredericksburg. So there were multiple options looked at, and I'd be happy to have a follow up conversation with you if you want to discuss further some of those other options, as well as the needs of transit dependent individuals who may require transit and where they may be located, or so on. So happy to follow up if you would like.
Sir.
Mr. Bush.
So follow up to what you said. I would like to see the data that shows that Fred Bus was a success story prior to its termination in 2012, because they left for a reason. And I don't remember exactly. I wasn't on the board at that time. I don't know if the county said, look, we're not paying for it because there's no return on investment, or Fred Bus says, we're not going to participate over there because we're not making any money. One of those is true, and it, I don't believe it was a favorable situation for either party involved. But so I would like to see that data that you're citing.
Yeah, and again, I'm not necessarily calling it a success story. Just that was where the riders were. That was an option that was done in the past, certainly an option for the future. I believe the service was originally ended in part due to the cost. So the county was looking for a cheaper cost for the service. And they did not find a cheaper cost and Fred no longer served the county, so. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for coming out. Thank you for the presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Lehane, if you could stay a minute, I don't know if you're online or if you're there in person because I couldn't get my internet to work here. But I, I want to thank you for picking this study back up. I want to thank the Department of Economic Development and Tourism for do, for doing so. And Mr. Bush, I just want to speak to some of the issues that you mentioned specifically. Mr. Lehane, can you tell me, is there still a TIP program that GWRC sponsors?
A TIP program? Are we talking about the Transportation Improvement Program?
The incentive for the base riders, the federal workers, to use the service.
I would be unsure of that. That would be more of a question for Fred, as it would be a Fred Transit Service, but I'm happy to follow up and provide an answer to that question. I know there is funding that comes based on ridership incentives through DRPT. If you have a slightly higher ridership, the state provides slightly more of a match to the service. And that's throughout the whole Fred system. So if there's a higher passenger per hour in the Fred system, DRPT will provide slightly more of a match versus a lower passenger per hour, DRPT will provide slightly less. But I can follow up more on that specific information.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, I would appreciate it. And so what I'm getting at is I was on staff in 2018 and was actively involved on behalf of the county in the development of the data and the routes that were presented here tonight. And I can tell you specifically the Dahlgren connection, and I can understand why you would question it, Mr. Bush. Why would I, if I have a car, why would I take public transit? But part of the discussion there was for some of Dahlgren's personnel, the younger personnel who are there for maybe six months at a time, stuck on base for training. And frankly, they, they can't afford their own vehicles. So the base commander at the time was very enthusiastic about the prospect of joining with us and possibly bringing this back to aid in transporting his younger personnel. As well, this TIP, if that's still in, in process with GW Ride Connect, it would allow an incentive. So then basically would cover the cost for some of those federal workers to use the service. So what I would like to do is see if there's consensus to direct our new county administrator, who we have gone on record and said has vast public transportation or transportation planning experience in general, to make contact with the current base commander to see if there is still interest in this before we just kind of push it aside. Because this was never brought to the Board of Supervisors back in 2018. So that's why I appreciate that it was brought to all of us because that's what we're here for, to make the best decisions on behalf of all of our constituents. So again, I would request consensus for Mr. Miller to reach out to Base Command to see if they are still interested. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, there is consensus. And just let you know that he is here in the flesh.
Yes, I am in person.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everyone.
Next action items, Sheriff Giles. And the uniforms do look very snappy.
Thank you. And it's at no cost to the taxpayers at all, not a dime. So you can thank your local drug dealers for that.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Miller, I just want to congratulate you and welcome you aboard. I'm looking forward to working with you. See you tomorrow at the meeting, I guess. I have actually two action items that bring me before you today. So we'll jump right on the first one, which is the ID Networks Microsoft SQL 2019 server licenses for 100 users. It gives us client access to software purchases. But, Mr. Chairman, before I get into the summary of it, I'd like to give you some background as far as why we're asking for this number and why we're asking for the numbers. So back in 2016, the Sheriff's Office purchased a new RMS CAD system. The new system was placed on an existing 2014 server that held the data from our old RMS system to maintain that old data so we could cross reference and pull that over as needed. And that old data wouldn't be lost. Over the past years, the IT department, through Chris Dines, has been attempting to get several vendors that use that server to provide their specifications so that we could migrate the data to the, to another updated server. A couple of months ago, the 2014 server froze up due to lack of memory, which caused our MDTs and the CAD stations to become nonoperational. The IT department, through their wisdom and hard work, was able to move some data around on that server and free up some memory temporarily. And it allowed us to temporary, a temporary fix to continue the daily operations which we're operating under at this point in time. The Sheriff's Office CAD RMS server, which has been in use since 2014, needs to be, needs a replacement. The physical server has already been purchased and running the newest Windows 2019 operating system and is racked in the Sheriff's Office Server Room Cabinet. However, the SQL database licenses for the CAD RMS server and the access licenses for the clients, which are the users, are what need to be purchased next. The clients, 100 users, consists of Sheriff's Office deputies in the office and on the road using their MDTs, 911 dispatchers and Sheriff's Office administrative staff, along with fire and rescue and emergency services personnel and administrative staff and administrative, and their administrative staff and administrative staff in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. I'd before you to request the funding for the last phase of the upgrade to the public safety system in King George County. This will consist of SQL Server standard core edition licenses. Our new server has 16 cores and processors with software assurance. SQL Server standard editions with software assurance and SQL Server licenses and software assurances for 100 users, the client access licenses. The current CAD system and RMS server is running SQL Server 2012 on Windows 2012 server. Our CAD and RMS software provider, ID Networks, along with our MDT county network connectivity provider, NetMotions, agree the need for this, these upgrades to take place as soon as possible to ensure that the application used by our public safety provider remain available 24 hours a day. Moreover, with the software assurance portion of this request, we could provide a backup server that the county's public safety offices can use in case of failure on the main CAD and RMS server. This way, the SQL licenses can be easily transferred to the backup CAD and RMS server and our public safety officers, offices can function without downtime or delay. Redundancy is crucial in our ability to provide the best and timely emergency services to our citizens. If you approve this project, the new server setup can begin by the IT staff. Then the data can be migrated from the old server to the new server. At that point, our application, our applications software provider, which is ID Networks and NetMotion, can set up, initialize, test and roll out the new CAD RMS environment. So my recommendation tonight is that the Sheriff's Office is requesting $77,265.62 from the general fund balance to cover that last phase of the upgrade to the public safety system in King George County. This will consist of the SQL Server standard core edition license with software assurance, SQL Server standard edition with software assurance and SQL Server licenses and software assurance for 100 users and the client access licenses. Questions?
Yes, sir. So the current server is the old server. You have a new server that is ready for the new software when the new software is here. The old software won't run on the current, the new server. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is the old server going to be the backup server or is there a secondary server that was, I don't know off the top of my head? Was there, so? Two brand new servers, one's a redundancy server, and then the primary server. What's going to be done with the old server? Is it, is it past its prime? Is it not usable anymore? Tracking, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
My question was already answered, the redundancy. So we do have redundancy so that in case the one goes down, we have backup.
We will once that seems up and running.
Thank you. That's all I wanted to hear.
So the old server and all that information is going to be on this new one? So the two old systems are going to be finally put together?
Correct. Once we, if these licenses are approved, yes.
Is this Cupca? Any questions?
Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So I'm not sure, well, maybe this would be most perfect for the sheriff and not Mr. Dines. Sheriff, was this in your CIP last year?
No, ma'am, it was not.
Were you trying to get them?
No, no, sorry. No, ma'am, it was not. And the reason for that is once we started putting that system on the 2014, Mr. Dines has been in contact with those vendors to get that specification. So we could get this stuff put on a CIP and moved over. And then with the 2014 system freezing up on us and the memory not being available, it turned into a critical emergency type request.
Okay, very good. Given the urgency and the critical nature of it, you have satisfied my question. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Scranger?
Thank you, sir. So it's a license. Is this a perpetual license or is it a yearly cost to maintain the license?
Yeah.
Perpetual.
Perpetual. I was going to say that.
Okay, tracking. Thank you. Bush, would this come from the general fund? Is that the request to transfer from the general fund to fund this?
Yes, please.
Tracking, okay. I move to transfer and appropriate $77,265.62 from the general fund to fund the purchase for the last phase of the upgrade to the public safety system in King George County, which will consist of the SQL Server standard core edition license with software assurance, SQL Server standard edition with software assurance and SQL Server license and software assurance for 100 user cows, which are client access licenses.
Second.
Any discussion?
Hang on. I see a hand going up. I'm going to guess that maybe there was a mistake in the motion.
I think you need to ask for it from the general fund balance in your amendment.
I would, oh, thank you. I would like to amend my motion to have it transferred from the general fund balance.
I'll second that again.
Any discussion? Mr. Bush.
Thank you, sir. So being at $77,000 is, what is our timeline for CIP? I understand the situation that it has froze up. If it's critical to maintain current operations, I can see it. But if it's not absolutely critical to maintain operations, I believe something like this should wait for the CIP process.
It is, it is critical. We, I mean, we've banned it, they've been able to Band-Aid it and move some stuff in the memory and we're waiting for it to go down again.
Okay, so.
We're holding our breath.
So it's, it's not possible, it's, it's most likely going to crash again, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It's not if, it's when.
Thank you for that clarity.
Ms. An, you have your hand up again. Come on up.
The CIP will be going to the Planning Commission not until August 10th. So that's another month from now. And then after it goes to them, it'll have to come back for a budget work session before it's accepted. So that's the timeline.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
And next up, Sheriff Giles again.
And my second action item tonight is the next generation 911 migration construction reimbursement costs. Tonight, if you have any additional questions, I have Brian from VDEM and Amy is, should be on the line. And I also have my communications director, Rhonda Smith, back there as well. If there's any questions I can't answer for you, which I'm sure there's probably more so. But anyway, the Virginia 911 Service Board is the state body that runs the PSAP, which is basically the Public Safety Answering Point. In the Commonwealth, the next generation 911 system is the new statewide modern Internet Protocol IP network that will replace the current 911 system, which uses old analog technology that is based on voice communication, regular phone service. In our current information age, the Virginia 911 Service Board has made it a priority for each locality to ensure quality and consistent 911 service to our citizens and visitors. The new service, which is provided by AT&amp;T, will provide faster delivery and transfer of 911 calls to the appropriate PSAP, interconnect with other PSAP systems and databases, securely receive multimedia information such as texting, photos and video to 911 communications. This new digital network is called the Emergency Services Internet Protocol Internet, which is an Internet protocol that is guaranteed to have a total of only five minutes of downtime per year. This construction phase of the next gen 911 inflammation consists of the labor and materials needed for the installation of the conduit or pathways from Route 3 through the new pathway for diversity into the Sheriff's Office. The best thing about this funding request, and Mr. Bush, you'll like this, is the Virginia Department of Emergency Services or Emergency Management will refund 100% of the costs for this work through a state grant. Fairfax was the first locality to implement this plan, and King George and many other localities will ride off this VDEM state contract to accomplish this task. There are also two upcoming migrations, reimbursement costs associated with this project from the current fiscal year. One consists of the call handling equipment services, and the other is the text to 911 feature. Each of these reimbursable items should total 15,000 apiece for a grand total of 30,000 that will be 100% refunded by the state in the next couple of years. The call handling equipment will be replaced, which will be an item that will reside in the, in that year Sheriff's Office CIP budget request. The cost for the equipment replacement is not known at this time. The last item, when the installation is completed, The last item, when the installation is completed, will cost a calculation of the new AT&amp;T 911 phone line charges and the billing charge difference in the current 911 monthly, current 911 phone line monthly charges. This is called monthly delta, which is fifty-five thousand, forty-four dollars and twelve cents, which represents twelve months of bills, which will be a hundred percent reimbursed from the first two years of the Next Gen 911 project. Upon the third year, the county will take over that cost for the 911 phone lines and will reside in the future operating budgets of the Sheriff's Office. So the total amount of money that the county has been awarded by VDEM is seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. My recommended action from the Sheriff's Office is the request to accept and appropriate seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents in a hundred percent reimbursable grant funds from the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. E-911 will cover the expenses from their operating budget and will be reimbursed by this grant.
Thank you. From Bushen?
Good, sir. Ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Reimbursable, do you know when the reimbursement should be in?
Five days. Come on, come on, man. You told me when I first got here, but.
Good evening, members of the board. Brian Crumpler, Regional Outreach Division Director from VDEM within the 911 Geospatial Services Bureau. So for reimbursements, whenever a reimbursement request is submitted, it's typically about a sixty to ninety day process to get that reimbursement back to the county.
Awesome.
Right now, we're at the start of the fiscal year, so there's closeouts, so it may take a little bit longer if it, if it happens to be at the start of a year, but typically it's sixty to ninety days.
Thank you.
Mr. Bush? This is Cupca?
No, sir, thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Sheriff Giles, could you run the number by me again? Because it was a different number I heard than what I see in my board packet. I thought you said seven-hundred-and-eighty.
One.
Eighty, so could you, could you reread the, the requested motion one more time for me?
Sure. Sheriff's Office requests to accept and appropriate seven-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, one-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents in the a hundred percent reimbursement grant funds for the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. The E-911 will cover the expenses from their operating budget and will be reimbursed by this grant.
So moved. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next is Department of Finance, adopt, adopt, adoption of resolution amending the twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget. Ms. Han?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Included in your packet, board packet, was a resolution to accept, well, we already accepted to, but to amend the budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, an appropriate designated, and they're the coronavirus state and local fiscal relief funds. In this resolution, you'll, you will see that there are adopted revenues of the two million, six-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars that have been transferred to King George County at this time in the first installment. And at this time, since we do not know what we're going to use the funds for, we are, we have to have a balanced budget, so we've included in that resolution a line for eligible projects and to put the two points, two million, six-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars into that fund. And then it be it further resolved that the county administrator is charged with the responsibility for generally administering the budget and implementing expenditures in the CSLFRF funds account, and be it further resolved that the county administrator is charged with the responsibility for reporting the monthly disbursement of appropriated funds by account from the CSLFRF funds and receipts of projected revenues, and be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors may authorize transfers between funds and accounts from time to time as it deems necessary and expedient. So that last part will mean that when we get into our budget work sessions, or we're, we're suggesting that we have budget work session later this summer to determine the best use of these funds, that the Board will be charged with being, moving those funds from the holding expenditure line to the actual project that we're having. And so my recommendation is that we, that the Board adopt the attached resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two operating budget to appropriate the CSLFRF funds in the amount of two million, six-hundred-and-six-thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Chair. So just, you're amending the budget in excess of one percent? And we advertised that for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Did we hold that?
No.
Okay, so prior to the motion.
That was what we had earlier this evening.
Yeah, I was accepting it.
Okay, and that was?
Yeah.
Okay, on the amendment of the budget. That's what, that was my question, but that was?
That was the, to accept the money. This is a resolution to appropriate it.
Right. But the, the advertisement requirement is to amend the budget in excess of one percent, not to accept money or to appropriate it, but to amend?
Then no, we did not have.
Well, the advertisement agenda is proposed amendment to the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. That's to amend the budget.
Great.
So.
I just wanted to make sure.
That should satisfy the public hearing requirement, correct?
I am in a gray zone on it, from what I heard and on what the previous one was. I know it was to accept the funding. I just didn't know whether the motion at the end of that was to amend the budget and whether we held the public hearing on that matter. I, in abundance of caution, I raised it at this time. I just didn't hear those words, and it was a little confusing to me that we split this up for, between the appropriation and the budget amendment and the acceptance of the money. So I'm just raising it to make sure that there's no issue because it does require public hearing. And we did, Donna and I and Travis did advertise it, and we sent out the advertisement. So I know it was properly advertised, but the issue is the, the only thing that y'all need to do a public hearing on is the amendment in excess of one percent. And I, it probably was said, I just don't recall hearing it. And I didn't push the point, the, the issue at the previous time because I thought maybe we were going to catch it here before we had done it.
I would be of the opinion that everything was articulated appropriately. However, we did not specify the amount that the budget was increasing by. So that point was not made. However, the dollar amount, the significance, was made public. So I, I don't see where, you know, we just didn't say the words, it's increasing by one percent. The dollar amounts were appropriately advertised, that was appropriately discussed, public hearing took place, properly advertised. I, I would be of, of thought that the matter has been settled appropriately.
What I can say is I just don't have a clear memory of what, what it was said, but if the Board does, but I'm bringing up, what needed to be said was that we are now going to hold a public hearing and take public comment on the amendment of the budget for this fiscal year in the amount of, then you get public comment, then you have a motion, and you say, I hereby amend, move that we accept the following money and amend the budget in the amount of, the percentage doesn't need to be stated. And I, if that happened, then you're good. If it didn't, then we could hold that public hearing real quick.
Mrs. Han?
At the beginning of the public hearing, Mr. Stonehill did say that we were having a public hearing to amend the budget and, and the amount, but I'm not sure if you said the amount or I said it in my staff.
Great, thank you. As, as long as those elements were, were both in there, it wouldn't matter who said it. Thank you. Maybe that's where I got confused, that the amount wasn't in the motion.
It's not in the script, but Mrs. Han says that she said it.
It's on my board report, and I read from the board summary. It's in your packet.
Fantastic. It's on YouTube, apparently. Better safe than sorry, that's why I, I raised it at this time. If, as long as it was stated, acceptance of the funds, amendment of the budget, and the amount, we're good to go, prior to the public hearing.
I heard Ms. Han say the amount.
Thank you.
All right, so, are we, do you have a motion on that?
Motion, a second?
And a second. Properly seconded. And that was discussion. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, Mrs. Han, again?
The subject of the next item is the Northern Neck Regional Broadband Initiative Phase One. The King George County Board of Supervisors authorized the county administrator to negotiate a local contribution not to exceed five-hundred thousand to the Northern Neck Regional Broadband Initiative Phase One at a meeting that was held on July fourteenth, twenty-twenty. The amount was to secure a higher precedence in the construction timeline for King George County. Further, the King George County Board of Supervisors approved a local contribution in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand for Phase Two that will be invoiced to the county after July twenty-twenty-two. The purpose of this action is to authorize the transfer of funds from the Northern Neck of funds for the Northern Neck Regional Broadband Initiative Phase One. The, we will be invoiced sometime this month for that first five-hundred thousand dollar agreement. Included in your board package was a letter to the Chief Executive Officer at All Points Broadband, signed by former interim county administrator Travis, Travis Cusenberry. And we would like to request that we move five-hundred thousand of the, to authorize the county administrator to transfer five-hundred thousand from the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, the CSLFRF project expenditure line to the CSLFRF broadband expenditure for the first phase, five-hundred thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
There will be a second time you're going to come back to us for the other hundred and fifty, right? That's my understanding? Do we know when that will be?
We will receive an invoice sometime in July twenty.
Twenty-twenty-two.
Mrs. Cupca?
I'm good, thank you.
All right, we have a motion, and it's properly seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. And once again, Department of Finance, change order for Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, the subject is Change Order Number One, Associated with the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project. Authorize the county administrator to execute a change order with Finish Line Environmental to increase the contract price of the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project by twenty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. In April twenty-twenty-one, a construction service agreement was executed with Finish Line Environmental for the Fairview Beach Riverbank Stabilization Project. During construction, Finish Line Environmental has encountered underground, I mean groundwater seepage along portions of the riverbank. The groundwater seepage was not anticipated and control of the seepage was not included in the project's scope of work. The work required to control the seepage included installation of an underdrain system consisting of various sized stone wrapped in geotextile material. A detailed description of the underdrain system is provided in the attached letter from Schneible Engineering dated June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. We do expect that there will be other portions of work area that will also require the installation of underdrain to control groundwater seepage. The change order request has been reviewed and is recommended by Schneible Engineering and the county engineer. This change order will increase the total cost of the agreement with Finish Line Environmental from one million, six-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty dollars and sixty-two cent to one million, six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and sixty-two cent. The change order will also increase the contract time by seven days. The date of final completion will now be January seventh, twenty-twenty-two. There are funds available in the project construction contingency for this change order.
Thank you. Motion?
That's a question.
Question?
Sir, uh, thank you. I was glad to hear that there's money in the contingency. Just a question about the, the point that brought up that there's an anticipation that there will be need for further underdrain groundwater seepage work? That, do we anticipate that, I know it's going to be hard to, to give a yes or no probably, but I'm going to ask, how, how much do we have in contingency left? And is there a concern that we're going to run out before any other change orders come in that would be requested to address those kinds of issues?
I'm not sure, Donna, do you know? I will have to get with Travis on that, and then I can.
Fair enough. Thank you.
That was the question I had, is, is there any anticipate, how much the anticipate cost of the second one is, but that would just need further clarification, but thank you.
Not usual. All right, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute a change order with Finish Line Environmental to increase the contract price of the Fairview Beach River Stabilization Project by twenty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Again, Department of Finance, change order associated with Fairview, or no, we did that one, award of construction service agreement for King George Elementary School Single Ply Recovery Roof Installation Project.
The award of the construction service agreement for the King George Elementary School's Single Ply Roof Installation Project. Authorize the county administrator to take the following actions. Issue a notice of award to Virginia Roofing Corporation for the King George Elementary School's Single Ply Roof Installation Project for alternate bid item one in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. Authorize the county administrator to execute a construction service agreement with Virginia Roofing Corporation in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for alternate bid item one, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney. Establish a project budget for the King George Elementary School's Single Ply Roof Installation Project in amount of six-hundred-and-seventy thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. On June sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one, bids were received and publicly opened for the King George Elementary School Single Ply Roof Installation Project. A total of eight bids were received. A bid tabulation is attached. The low bid base in the amount of six-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, three-hundred-six dollars was submitted by the Virginia Roofing Corporation. The base bid is for the installation of sixty-mil EPDM synthetic rubber roof system. The color of the roof material is black. A twenty-year no-dollar limit watertight warranty is included with the bid. The bid form also include one alternate bid item. Alternate bid item one in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars would provide a sixty-mil white TPO roof system in lieu of the EDPM roof system. A twenty-year no-dollar limit watertight warranty is also included with the alternate bid. The alternate bid price is fifty-five thousand, sixty-three dollars lower than the base bid. Mr. William Saunders, President/CEO of Roof Consulting Services, Inc., has completed a review of Virginia Roofing Corporation's bid and qualifications, and has determined that Virginia Roofing Corporation is a qualified, responsible, and responsive contractor. In the attached email, Mr. Saunders stated, "I always lean toward recommending EPDM in the geographic area because of how easy they are to repair with peel and stick materials as opposed to need, to needing and heat gun to properly repair TPO membranes." But with a fifty-five thousand dollar savings, I'd probably go with TPO on this project. Staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to Virginia Roofing Corporation. to issue a notice of award to Virginia Roofing Corporation for the King George Elementary School's Single Ply Roof Installation Project in the amount of six-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for alternate bid item one, and authorize the county administrator to execute a construction service agreement with Virginia Roofing Corporation, subject to approval of the Construction Service Agreement as to form by the county attorney. Staff also recommend that the Board of Supervisors establish the project budget as follows. Construction agreement, Virginia Roofing, six-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars. On-site inspections, RCS, twelve thousand dollars. Project contingency, five percent, thirty-one thousand, nine-hundred-twelve dollars. Total project budget, six-hundred-seventy-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. And funds have been appropriated in the capital fund for this project.
Thank you. Spinner?
I just have to get some clarification, because I talked to Mr. Cusenberry about this, and he is an engineer. Is, is this bid for the, I guess, there's the black membrane, the white membrane? So is the one that we were approving, because there was a lot of stuff in there? For the white membrane, that's cheaper? Or is it only for the black membrane? Because from what I understood, they're basically the same, I mean, the same quality.
Mr. Chair, we, we had a meeting, and Travis had recommended the white membrane as a result of the heat and for the building, the roof longevity, as well as the equipment that's there in keeping the heat down. I can't, that's my understanding. Mr. Miller was there as well, that you, that it was white.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, there was a lot of information in there. Hard to give trial, so I just wanted to make sure, because it is a cost statements to the county. So, thank you.
Questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Cupka?
Not really a question, but I can also provide some clarification on that. If you recall, you and I attended, and Mr. Britton attended, the agenda meeting, and I specifically asked that question. And my understanding is that this is for the white, less expensive roof, and I inquired as to whether, from, if they were amenable to that. I do have an email, because if you recall, we did not have that answer at the time we had this agenda meeting last week. But I do have follow-up from Mr. Cusenberry stating that he did hear from Dr. Benson that the white, parentheses, less expensive roof for the KGES project is okay. So it is for the white membrane.
Thank you. Mr. Bush?
So, that all makes sense to me. My question would be in, how was, or how were the bids advertised? Were we bidding out same product, same work to everybody? We had eight different companies that put in for this bid. Were they all bidding on the same thing? Because if we award this to somebody and they bid on different terms than what was advertised, we could wind up in a situation where something was awarded by a government body and the advertisement wasn't done equally across all the different companies. I, I could see that as maybe biting us down the road, unless that those options were included in the advertisement. It just depends on how, how the bids were sought and what the language was in there. I just don't want to wind up in a situation down the road. Mr. Chair, well, Tina may know the exact, she may remember the RFP on top, or?
It was, it was one bid, so everyone bid it on.
Right, but I don't believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but Travis would have to answer it, and we would have to go back and research it, and you have to delay the vote. I'm not, we're not gonna be able to do it tonight, but I believe that this was just a single ply roof bid. So these people, yeah, it was, and then the people came in with these options, and the guy had the one that you can repair with the patch, the white, the black, and anyone could have suggested any type of single ply roof. And that's my understanding from speaking with Travis reviewing the RFP and, and the, the draft contract. I, I can't tell you that for a hundred percent certain, but that's how we do it all the time. They came in with this idea. Okay, well then, that satisfies it, then. I'm not worried about a contest on this. Yeah, that, we're fine with that, then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? May I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a couple of different motions, because there's a handful of different actions, so I'm gonna make one for each action. I move to authorize the county administrator to issue a notice of award to the Virginia Roofing Corporation for the King George Elementary School's Single Ply Roof Installation Project for alternate bid item one in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute a construction service agreement with Virginia Roofing Corporation in the amount of six-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-three dollars for alternate bid item one, subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes.
I move to establish a project budget for the King George Elementary School's Single Ply Roof Installation Project in the amount of six-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. Thank you. And now up, Mr. Miller. Your first county administrator report.
It'll be brief, but I, I will just like to say thank you for all the nice words and the kind words. I am very excited to be here and just really, you know, these, these first two days are immersion, osmosis, everything I can do to learn and to, to, you know, jump right in. And, and I've had an opportunity to jump right in here, and, and I just really want to say thank you for the opportunity to serve you. I have provided my contact information. I'm gonna meet with you all as, as soon as you all can do that, according to your schedules, your busy lives. Just really want to get to know, you know, your perspectives on things, having the opportunity to meet with the staff and, and Mr. Britton as well, and just, you know, just excited to be here, and I thank you again. I will tell you, I did mention that there was a, just a, a small update on the, the removal of the statue. I will tell you this, and, and Ms. Turner could maybe even elaborate. There have been no responses to the request for proposal, and it's supposed to be due in next week on the twenty-first. And so Ms. Turner had recommended to both Mr. Cusenberry and myself to, to move that to the eleventh of August to extend the date. Am I correct? Okay, and, you know, so I think that would be something that we would do. I don't know that, was that a board action that, that needed that? So it's, it's just a, just an update. I'd also point out that the, the, the date for the receipt of proposals for the Ralph Bunch Building is scheduled for the eighth of September, if that's just an informational item for you all. And then, in terms of some of the questions that were directed about the Fairview Beach, I'd be happy to circle back with, with Mr. Cusenberry, get you some information and provide that to you all, just to let you know, because I think those are some very legitimate concerns. But again, just very happy to be here, and I look forward to continuing to serve you and, and the citizens of King George. Thank you.
Thank you. Man, again, welcome. I think that's it. Do I have a motion?
I move to adjourn to August third, two, twenty-twenty-one, at six-thirty here in the boardroom.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye, we didn't hear anything from Mrs. Cupka, so. Meeting adjourned.